Committee in order, all please rise. I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on a business that's before us this evening. And please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the municipal with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take your oath.
Alderman Basso.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Clifford. Alderman Clifford. Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Kromarski.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Mayor, city attorney, and city clerk.
All right, no special presentations tonight. Under consent calendar, we've got two items, the approval of minutes of the city council meeting from November 5th, 2019, along with the approval of the payroll and voucher list for the period ending November 15th, 2019. Entertainer motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Move by Alderman Kromarski, second by Alderman Violet, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, no sealed bids tonight, under my report, just a couple of things, we are entering the Christmas season, as you may or may not have ever quite looked, not even Thanksgiving yet, but it's going to be Christmas pretty soon. A couple of items that are happening, we've got the annual holiday tree lighting, which will be held on November 29th, from 6:30 till 8:30, run by the Chamber of Commerce, and that's going to be located at Lake Catherine Nature Preserve. And then in conjunction with that, the tree decorating contest will also be held on November 26th through the 29th, and the winner will be actually announced at the tree lighting ceremony. And then the Kris Kringle Market will be held on December 6th and 7th in the municipal parking lot, is turned into a huge event for the city of Payless Heights, and so all come out, and maybe Alderman Key can talk about that a little bit later. With that, end of my report. City clerk.
No report.
City treasurer couldn't be with us tonight, asked me to fill in for him, so I will go through that. The general fund had a beginning balance of $4,600,360.39, revenues of $687,037.60, and expenses of $1,412,129,081, leaving an ending balance of $3,852,211. All funds, we had a beginning balance of $18,698,359.26. We had revenues last month of $22,910,288.94, and expenditures of $2,862.476.62, leaving an ending balance of $18,654,513.46. Entertainer motion to approve the treasury report.
So moved.
Move by Alderman Kromarski, second by Alderman Clifford, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. City treasurer? I'm sorry, city attorney?
No report.
Any communications, anyone here?
Just an announcement.
Yes, sir.
Payless Lions Tree Lot, Christmas, annual Christmas sales tree lot, will be open starting on November 23rd, and trees come in at 8 o'clock in the morning, so anybody interested in volunteering, helping to set up, high school kids, or need hours, that, should just be there at 8 o'clock and take care of you. But the sales start November 23rd till we're sold out, hopefully in mid-December, so come on up there and buy your furniture for this year. Yeah, thank you.
All right, anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Numerous residents have reached out to express their thanks to you for responding to them so quickly and so thoroughly regarding some of the issues we have ongoing with the Lock It or Lose It campaign, and all of our efforts to try and stymie that, but they were very impressed with the thoroughness of your response and the quickness.
Great, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, one thing on the tree lot, I forgot to mention the location, it's on just south between Nixon and the bank, on 126 and Harlem.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Any citizens wishing to address the council tonight? If not, finance committee, Alderman.
Mr. Mayor, we have one item tonight, it's number 10, this is a motion to approve the health insurance renewal, and this year we're going with United Healthcare for the year 2020.
Move by Alderman McGovern, McGrogan, second by Alderman Clifford, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. I want to give a lot of little hats off to Dan Nissavich, negotiated a real good deal, actually, we probably saved about at least 9%, if not more, on this year's premium, so actually waived out the whole month of premium, so.
Yeah, he played, in his report to the finance committee, he played, I think it was United Healthcare, and he got a bid from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and then he went back to United Healthcare, and they not only beat or matched it, they undercut it, so he played his cards really well.
Very good. Something you don't go for said sometimes, but pay down in the bottom line. All right, public safety, Alderman McGovern?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of things I want to talk about tonight, please. First, I have, I just got this this afternoon, this is another of the new scams, this is centered right for the veterans, though, okay? There's a new widespread scam targeting US veterans, the scam uses sophisticated technology that generates VA operating signatures, thus giving the impression via caller ID that the veteran is reaching a telephone call from the VA. Most veterans will see the following on their caller ID, Department of Veteran Affairs, at 1-800-827-1000. The scammers will claim to be VA personnel, the scammers use scripted material to mimic the culture of the VA personnel and implementing processes that would be used when a veteran contacts the VA. The scammer then proceeds to request that the veteran verify his personal information, and as everybody knows, please do not provide any personal information, any email or password information over the phone, okay? If you need any more information, you can contact, you can look it up on www.fccgover.gov, This was just handed to me this morning, and this is something that not only concerns the veterans, but their wives, and maybe the widows. And right here, coming in at the time of Veterans' Day and all the holiday seasons, I just want everybody to be aware that this is coming up, and this is totally a scam, do not respond to it at all, okay? I thank you for that one. Second, as far as Payless Heights goes, very recently, we had one block out here at Payless Heights that had five unlocked cars stolen, or broken into, excuse me, and the car, the red SUV that was used was, had been previously stolen from Tinley Park, okay? So please, everybody, please be aware, lock your doors, we have to keep this Lock It or Lose It program consistent because it's still an ongoing thing. Payless Heights is not the only victim, I swear this thing goes all the way from probably I-55, as far as south as we can, as far as south and east as we can go, but it's just, it's a continuing thing, and the only way we can eliminate it is continuously talk about it, and we have to turn around and let everybody be aware. So, as far as that part goes. Now, the other two things I want to bring up is, one, both have to do with the holiday season coming up. Just for your information, I just did some research with the Secretary of State again this year, a DUI conviction without any other thing, okay, is going to cost you over a three-year program, over $16,000. By the time you get your car insurance, you get your car, you get your car towed, you get everything else, backwards, forth, and get your temporary driver's license, and all the counseling services you have to go through, back and forth, your bill is $16,000 for one DUI conviction, okay? Please, Uber is one heck of a lot cheaper. Lyft is a lot cheaper. Get a limo, it's a lot cheaper, over the period of time, and besides that, you keep the holiday season much, much safer. And the last thing I really want to talk about with this holiday season coming along is shopping at night, please, if you're going to be out shopping at night now, this is not the time of the year to turn around and go shopping alone. If you're going to go, please go with somebody else. If you get into the shopping center, and don't go parking next to cars that have windows all blocked up, or anything like that, and wait, as you're shopping, please, men, take your wallet out of your back pocket and put it in your side pocket. Women, if you have a long purse, a long strap purse, put it inside your jacket, take your jacket off, strap the purse around on the inside, you don't got to close it up, you've got to protect it all the way through. That way, as you're walking through the hall, somebody can't just turn around and rip the purse right out of your hand, okay? As you're leaving, if you see anything, or if you feel uncomfortable, all these stores, all these malls, everything, they all have security, don't hesitate. If you're alone, and you are worried about it, don't hesitate to get somebody from a mall security, or any kind of store security, to assist you to turn around and go right, take you right to your car. Speaking of going to your car, if you're going to turn around and go to your car, and you have bags, and your purse, and everything else, parcels, be sure you have your key out in your hand before you get to your car, so you can open the door instantly, okay? This is important. And the last thing I'm going to ask to bring out to you is, once you get to your car, there's an old acronym called ELS, E-L-F-S, okay? Stands for, one, enter your car, two, okay, lock the door, three, fasten your seatbelt, and four, scram, get out of, just leave, get away from it, leave right away, don't hesitate, don't go playing with your cellphone and all that, in these dark evening hours, if you're alone, don't do it, just get out of there and go. If you've got to go down the street somewhere in a well-lighted area to turn around and check a phone call or something, be sure you find a nice, well-lighted area. Sorry I took so long.
It's fine, this is the season unfortunately, and just to kind of revisit what you said earlier about some of the car break-ins, if you do see something suspicious, please call the police, that's what they're there for, they don't mind coming out there and making a call if they have to, and that's what they're on duty for.
Yeah, our police department volunteers to go out, anytime you turn around and see them, something. If you do, if you're out walking your dog early in the morning, and you see some debris around somebody's car, dial that one, call them right away, they'll come right out.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
On that point, if they're like breaking into cars and stealing cars and things of that nature, you think with the holidays coming up, since so many families, there's two people working, that during the day, and you know, you always see, like, especially ABC seems to do a good job highlighting the fact that these people are like stealing packages left and right off the people's front stairs, and they're by their front doors, I was wondering if maybe, like, if we had room here somewhere, that like the city could say, if you feel uncomfortable, you know, you could have your packages directed to the, like, the city, and like, we could put them in the lobby or something, or, you know, have them delivered, I mean, something, maybe we could look.
Well, isn't a majority of the delivery places, well, actually, you can go to UPS, and you can pick them up at UPS.
You can pick them up at UPS.
Yeah.
And the other thing that they're asking people to do now is, if it's possible, have it delivered to your work address.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Good, okay, great.
Okay.
Little safety hints. Municipal grounds and property, Alderman Basso?
Yes, Mayor, I have no agenda this evening.
All right, fine. Planning and zoning, Alderman Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to adopt an ordinance for zoning variance to allow for an oversized structure, an open-air pergola, measuring 16 by 16, to be erected in the rear lap of residents located at 12312, South 75th Avenue.
Second, move by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman Key, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
So you know what this is, it actually comes under a recreational structure, which we don't have any real clarity on it, so they put it under what would be in the backyard of shed of being 12 by 12, this is basically right in the middle of the yard there, so they're going to revise and update the definition of recreational structures, and not commingle it with the sheds, and getting them confused, it'll save on getting the variance recourse system. My next thing is a motion to adopt an ordinance for zoning special use to allow for a dog grooming salon to operate within the B District, specifically in the commercial shop space located at 13405 Ridgefield Avenue.
Move by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman Key, discussion, roll call.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Key, recreation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve a quitclaim deed between Christine Hopkins and the city of Payless Heights regarding 8140 Misty Meadows Drive.
Move by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet, discussion, roll call.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Yes.
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve payment in the amount of $20,598 to William and Christine Hopkins for reimbursement of costs related to the Misty Meadows subdivision.
Move by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
And then I'd like to make a motion to approve a recreation center room rental fee waiver, request from Noah Treat to conduct a health fair as part of his Eagle Scout project on February 29th, 2020.
Move by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, it's a motion.
I wanted to stipulate that the rooms being used are the meeting rooms, rooms 104 and 106, right off of 127th Street, because we're setting a precedent, we're waiving a fee, we're setting a precedent, and I want everybody to understand that those are the rooms that will be used.
Got you, okay. With that in mind, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then, there's a lot of activities happening, you can go to the recreation website, or you can go to the Payless Heights City website, and there's a link on there to the recreation department. There's lots of holiday activities going on for kids, so you and your whole family, visit one of those two sites and see, check out what's going on around town, and take advantage of those activities. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Roads to construction, Alderman Kromarski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to adopt a resolution updating the Cook County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan.
Move by Alderman Kromarski, sir, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Move to adopt a resolution appropriating the 2020 MFT funds for roadway maintenance.
Move by Alderman Kromarski, sir, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And that's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Licensed permits to franchise, Alderman Lewandowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a number of issues tonight, I'd like to make a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement with Cook County Health for the provision of environmental health inspection services from December 1, 2019, through November 30, 2020.
Move by Lewandowski, second by Alderman Clifford, discussion, let's do a roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
Okay, next, I'd like to make a motion to approve a request from the Payless Baseball Association, or organization, excuse me, for a temporary sign permit to display signs at various locations, announcing PBO's 2020 registration dates, signs will be removed February 14th, 2020.
Move by Alderman, second by Alderman Clifford, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion authorize the city attorney to draft an ordinance amending the city's code, section 96.01(c), specific nuisances enumerated as recommended by the building commissioner.
Move by Alderman Lewandowski, second by Alderman McGovern, discussion, all in favor?
Just for clarity, so people know what nuisances enumerated means, so they know what, you know, we're doing, they always get a question, so I just thought I'd ask. It's a brief, do you have a, well, basically, what he was, the building guy was asking for?
Certainly, so this specific ordinance relates to noise nuisance, that's only enforceable against commercial properties now, so this would expand it to residential properties.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay. Motion to authorize the city attorney to draft an ordinance amending the city's code, section 96.03, mayor to abate as recommended by the building commissioner.
Second, move by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman Lewandowski, second by Alderman McGovern, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next, the motion to authorize the city attorney to draft an ordinance amending the city's code, section 156.01, international property maintenance code adopted as recommended by the building commissioner.
Move by Alderman Lewandowski, second by Alderman Clifford, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And finally, a motion to authorize the city attorney to draft an ordinance amending the city's code, section 93.131, special advertising signs and promotions as recommended by the building commissioner.
Move by Alderman Lewandowski, second by Alderman Clifford, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, that's the end of my report.
Great, thanks. Alderman Violet?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, business and economic development, Alderman Key?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if you visit any of the businesses in town, especially along Harlem Avenue, you'll see some big posters talking about the Kris Kringle Market and the other activities happening around town, like the Christmas lighting, Christmas tree lighting, there's an event at the library, something's happening at Lake Catherine, at the college, there's a concert, so there's a number of posters around, if you visit the city website, you'll also see the advertisement for all the different activities, if you go to Channel 4, and so you go to PHTV4, and look up holidays in the Heights, there's a little commercial on there for all the different activities, you might want to check that out, and, you know, the Kris Kringle Market, I just wanted to talk about that, to put on that event costs almost $30,000, and we raised a lot of money from the small businesses in town, they were very generous to help us put on that event, it doesn't just materialize on its own, and so, you know, I'd like you to consider keeping that in mind when you're doing your Christmas shopping, and you're maybe eating in restaurants more often during the holiday season, eat local and shop local, and that's how you keep the businesses open here in town, and that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, we got cable, Alderman McGovern?
No report at this time.
All right, any old business?
Mr. Mayor, I do.
Yes, sure.
I received an email from Deputy Chief Chakowski, we had a resident in here in October that complained about speeding at 124th and Nagel, and the deputy chief said after receiving information that a speeding auto complaint was lodged at the city council meeting for the area of 124th Block of Nagel Avenue, equipment was deployed to monitor traffic. The attached data is an example of what actually is happening at that location. In summary, the average recorded speed is 10.52 miles per hour, 50 percentile speed is 9.83 miles per hour, 85 percentile speed is 13.34 miles per hour, the minimum speed was 5 miles per hour, and the maximum speed recorded was 33 miles per hour. The resident believed cars were traveling as high as 60 miles per hour at that location. It appears the data cannot support the resident's claims. At this time, this location does not have a speeding problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One question, what is the speed limit on that street?
Uh, 20, resident.
20, yeah. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just under Alderman Lewandowski's report, I was just wondering, he might want to comment about a new addition to the city, we approved those signs for the ice cream, was it Andy's Ice Cream?
We did, so we have a franchise, Andy's, I think it's.
Frozen Custard.
Frozen Custard, coming to our commercial corner on 127th and Harlem, and we approved the variance on their signage, they have a rather large signature ice cream cone, and some extra signage, or their Andy's, the A, I believe, is larger than the ordinance allows for lettering, so we approved that, and we wish them very well in their business ventures here in Payless Heights.
Yeah, it's actually an outlaw from the Jewel properties there, so, after a number of years, it's finally getting developed, so.
Mr. Mayor, one other thing, as you know, the federal government has mandated on our licenses, for more information, I think it's called something like Reel, Reel It, or something along those lines, so it's a year from now, by next November, you have to hit, isn't it?
October.
October, you have to have it by October 1st, they want to have all this additional data, and a lot of things, like on your license, has to tie in, like with your passport and things of that nature. I learned the hard way today, because I decided I had, first of all, you have to go, there's, in this area, there's like, the location in Midlothian, on 144th and Crawford, you can go there, and it is extremely crowded, and it takes a long time, and we're a year out, basically, and they were, I mean, I was there for almost three hours, and they're very specific, like, on items, like you have, if your information, when you go there, you have to have like, all sorts of different things, like a social security, your driver's license, a passport, a utility bill, and all these different things, and they should be in the exact same, I learned the hard way, I had to go back to my house, because some of my stuff had like, my name, some had my name and my wife's name, some had my name and my initial, some had mine and my full name, with my middle initial completely spelled out, and you have to give it all in sync, otherwise, they send you back to make sure you get it correctly, and so, and it takes a while, and I was talking to some people there, since I was there for quite a while, and they said you should probably plan ahead if you have other family members, because it's extremely crowded all the time, and time flies, and you might, even everybody here, you might want to plan yourselves, it's not just walk in and give you a new driver's license, it takes quite a while.
So, the key is, don't do it in September, because you're never going to get it.
Right, well, and they said, don't do it on Saturday and Tuesday, they're closed Sunday and Monday, and unfortunately, today was Tuesday, so go on any other day and be prepared, bring a lunch.
My understanding is that if you choose not to get the real ID, you can fly with your old ID and a passport, and so, those of us who have passports, and who have driver's licenses that expire after next October, we can wait, you know, until, you know, until the next time we need to renew.
They could have done that same thing, they told me that right when I was leaving.
Yeah, all the information you need is on the Secretary of State's website, too, but just to point out, to add to what Alderman McGovern said, if you're a female, you have to have documentation showing your official name change, so if you've gotten married, you have to have your marriage license, which has to be a certified copy of your marriage license, if your social security card is different than your married name, you've got to get a new social security card, everything's got to match, so, and when you bring your utility bills, or other proof for a female, only your name has to be on that bill. So I learned it with my wife, when we went, we brought our utility bills and had both our names on them, and they would not take those, because, so we had to go back and try to find accounts that just had her name on it, so.
That's exactly what happened.
Which is kind of hard to do, because most people put the bills coming in the male's name, so.
And if you want to add, if you want to add some more shock to getting things done, wait till you get your, go to renew your license, because starting January 1st, they're up 50 bucks, and it'll cost you $158 and some odd cents in fees, starting January 1st, I just found that out when I went for my admission test.
Thank you, Democrats.
To record a deed just doubled, too, so, everything's.
You gotta pay for it, right?
Yeah. One other thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I just saw this today, it came on cranes late this afternoon when they sent out their email blast, and I was wondering maybe if Southwest Mayor's, Conference of Mayor's which you're like the president or vice president of, if, could the mayor start to talk, I mean, they suggested to the governor that with this referendum he has for this graduated income tax that he's planning on trying to push through, that they could maybe limit the amount of raises that go through under the state employees, because right now they're entitled to a 3% annual increase on the pensions, on the pensions.